And. I'll let the audience and committee members know that this meeting is being recorded, so we'll go ahead and do the roll call. We have Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
Lovely. Holiday light background, Jess.
Thank you.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa, I don't believe is here. I don't believe Mike will be here. Randy won't be here. Susan, I don't see. Tom?
Here.
And I am here. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, January 10th, 2022, is as hard that is to believe. Consent agenda, we had approval of minutes, account payable warrants, payroll warrants, a series of donations, including a pretty substantial donation from an anonymous donor to create an outdoor learning center at NMS. That is a $10,000 donation, so that is very much appreciated. So thank you to whoever that is, but I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Tom and June. Dave?
Yes.
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 June?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Robin or superintendent, do we have any public communications this evening?
None.
All right. So moving on, chairperson's report, although I'm going to reserve my comments for the end. Do we have a student representative on for their report?
I don't believe so, Craig.
Right. We're going to defer the special education update to our next meeting. I believe that's both items. Robin, is it also the youth in transition presentation as well?
Yeah, it's it's three, four, and five.
All right. All right, and with that, Superintendent Morgan, we're all the way to your part of the agenda. Can't hear you, though. Nope.
Turn off your Bluetooth on through your AirPods. Chairperson, Craig, can we skip to the NMS presentation right now while Superintendent Morgan?
Absolutely, it's a good idea. Go to Ms. Young, Mr. Worth.
Robin, do you mind? When I click on share screen, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
You're muted. I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry, Evan.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Can you, I can't.
There we go.
Is it sharing?
I was hoping to share my screen, so I could.
I don't. I don't know. Let's see.
Does he just need to be a panelist?
He is a panelist. I was having. There's lots of things going on right now.
Robin.
What I can hear you. I don't know what this is doing.
Can you make him a host, Robin?
I can see. I can see, but I don't know what happened here. Yeah, can you, can? You should be able to do it too, Craig. Let me see if I can get over there and make him a host.
I can't. I'm just a, just a lonely panelist tonight.
Oh, let's see.
I can do my report if you want now while while Robin's trying to do that, if that helps.
Sure.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, go for it, and we'll keep working on the screenshot.
Okay, excellent. So just wanted to touch base on a couple of things, in case anyone has noticed, we have had a slight uptick in cases. Over the past 10 days, our count is at 33, which, believe it or not, is, although it's high for us, it's quite low compared to some of our neighboring districts. So I think the test and stay is working out very well, and overall, we've been able to manage the numbers. They've actually dropped. We were up to 42 at one point last week, so we've dropped by nine cases over the last 10 days. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Hopefully, it was just a Thanksgiving bubble, and we'll probably have to deal with the same thing after the, after the next winter break. But again, I think test and stay is working. There seems to be no reason at this point in time to have to address anything any differently than what we have been doing up to this point. Questions on that? Snow days.
All right, Superintendent, I do have just a quick question. So the there seems to be a discrepancy in the counts between the bar graph on the dashboard and the tables. Is that a?
So the the dashboard's now current as of tonight. The table down below was only registering the first 20 unique identifiers. So if you you, so now you'll see a record count of the totality of all records, and that's a unique identifier. So there's with the information that updated today over the week for weekend cases that came in either at the end of last week or over the weekend, there's a total of 39 cases, and that's accurate as of tonight at 7:00.
Was the I know it was up to one of the, either the table or the graph, I don't remember which was up to 50. Was that accurate, or is that, was that because of some of that data anomaly?
Accurate.
Okay.
Yes, that's an accurate count. The table down below, if there was any data that was, looked like it was replicating in the form with eyes, it wasn't counting it as a unique identifier. So we added another unique identifier to confirm. The chart below always matches the dashboard number, but dashboard number is your live number that updates every 30 minutes.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Craig, just to give everyone a heads up, I think part of the volume, because I'm hearing issues with Nancy too, I think it may be weather related. Just because I was unmuted, if my Bluetooth was off, so I think we may be having some, some weather related issues, just because at least where I am is very high winds outside already. So just wanted to point that out. We may have some connectivity issues, and I keep getting a blurred screen every once in a while as well. Moving on to the snow days, at this point in time, it does look as though like we are going to have to make up at least the first five. No definitive decision has been made on that, but that is what I'm hearing. I am hopeful that the commissioner will make a decision on that before we actually have snow for the first time. I know we're expected to get some potentially difficult weather towards the end of this week, whether it be ice or snow. But again, at this point, there has been no formal decision from the Department of Ed, but I am hearing that districts may have an option to do a remote or hybrid type learning after they've made up the first five snow days, which would be similar to the model we had back when the Blizzard bags were in place, where we made up again the five days that you have to make up, and then again, moving to a Blizzard bag or hybrid type model for the, for the remainder of the days. But once I have that information, I will let everyone know. You know, it does impact our school calendar, but there are certain components that will be outside of our control, and that will fall within the jurisdiction of the commission. Preliminary budget message, just because this is something that I normally present just before the winter break, we are not going to be able to get to the preliminary budget message until Monday, January 10. We will be able to expedite that and basically fall in line with the rest of the budget calendar. But just because it was only one meeting and it happens to be early in December, we are going to put that initial message being shared off until Monday, the 10. Any questions on that? So if Mrs. Tissit's ready to go with their spotlight, we can move on to them.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody see my screen?
Yay, we do. All right, can you hear us? Okay?
Good.
Yes, okay. All right. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Both Mr. Worth and I are thrilled to be here and share a little bit about how things are going at Nissat Tisset so far this year. We've had a very busy start to the year. We started out with our safety drills. We had many students who weren't even in our buildings last year, so it was important that we reiterated all of our safety drills, including our fire drills, our Alice drill as well. We did do our drill where we go to our reunification site. So we were able to get that in before any of the bad weather comes. We've also launched our new STEM program, which is really exciting. We have a brand new STEM teacher. She's been taking the project lead the way trainings and implementing it, and the kids are having a great time with it. It's been, been great. We're also piling in our new math programs. We're piloting two math programs at Nissat Tisset this year. And then we also have our ELA program that we are also doing lots of professional development with, and our teachers are getting a lot of support as they launch that this year. So there, there's a lot going on. We've also been able to bring back activities for kids, which has been tremendous. The energy, because kids are involved in activities again, is just wonderful. So we had our girls and boys cross-country team compete this year. They had a great season. They beat Hawthorne Brook twice. The only team that they lost to was actually Brighton, so they had a really good season. This year, for the very first time, we had a unified field hockey team. So instead of Hawthorne Brook having a team and Nissat Tisset having a team, we had one team together, which was really exciting for the kids. So a lot of nice relationships formed between the students at both schools. So they had a good season. It's a building year, lots of fifth and sixth graders, learning about the sport more than anything else. So it'll get better as the, the years go on here for field hockey.
I'm going to talk a lot about our STEM week, which was in late October. So one, one fun thing that we had during STEM week, and STEM week really is, you know, it's part of the Massachusetts STEM week. Our teachers were trained on it a couple of years ago, and basically each grade level focuses on one specific kind of STEM topic, and I'll talk more about those in a second. But we were able to have Aaron Polanski, he's a superintendent in Southern Massachusetts come, and he gave a very, you know, a motivational speech and presentation. He had kids up there doing pushups with him and stuff, and it was just kind of about the power of positive and, you know, how that can kind of help kids reach their dreams. So it was a really fun, engaging presentation. We're happy to have him. He's a great guy. So some of the different topics that we had during STEM week, these were our fifth grade students that worked on the mystery of the lake. So students learn about filtering and water quality, water testing, and they figure out what, what is happening at this fictitious lake. Grade six students work on building a lunar colony. It's a really fun, hands-on week for these students, where they're kind of, they're constantly kind of building the different pieces to this colony that they're going to use during it with a few different constraints and some, and stuff. Seventh grade does kinetic sculptures. So through these pictures, you can see they, they have a lot of different gears and moving, moving items and stuff. So it's a really fun, interactive unit that they work on. An eighth grade work on the infamous surgical techniques. These are some of our students dissecting hearts from, I believe they're from a lamb. Is that right, Mrs. Young?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and their brains as well. You know, it's not for the faint of heart, but most, all students really love digging in there. And one thing that was really cool is we had students from the high school come down and join our students to, you know, rub shoulders with them, talk to them about the high school, but also help out, help out our eighth graders with these hands-on projects. So it was super fun. Our kids loved it, super engaged. It was a really great week.
And our fourth graders came over from Varnum Brook to visit as well. So that was, that was a nice opportunity. And I know several school committee members and Mrs. Milligan and Mr. Morgan came over and Mr. Hanson. So thank you guys for, for supporting us. Our student council has been very busy. They are making up for lost time from the last year or so. They've had lots of fundraisers. We did a breast cancer fundraiser earlier this year. They did a pumpkin carving contest here, which was a lot of fun, a lot of creativity. Some more fun pumpkins. We were able to have our first musical performance back in our auditorium this past week, which was just truly amazing. It was the first time in a year and a half that we've had any kind of show in our auditorium. We did allow for social distancing, so we had a special computer program we used to do the seating in our auditorium. The kids wore masks as they performed, and so did the guests that came. But it was a great show. Students ran the, the soundboard, the lights, all the props. They did it all. So it was, it was pretty remarkable, and they had a lot of fun as well.
It was a fantastic production. You could just see kids grow over the three months. It was wonderful.
Yeah.
Our best buddies group is back together. They'd been working, meeting virtually, but now they're meeting biweekly after school. Our club was even last year was, was noted as a, I believe, like a club of recognition, which is an honor from best buddies. Two different field trips that they've done so far is they've gone apple picking, and then they went to the altitude trampoline park. Always a very vibrant group that we have in our community that we totally love.
So this was something new that we tried this year. In past years, our artists have displayed their artwork in the library or the banks in different areas of town. We've always had an art show, but we really wanted all of our artists to get their artwork out in the community. You know, because we haven't been able to do that, and we wanted our community to see all the tremendous artwork that our students are capable of doing. So they created this mural. They took a few weeks to design it, and then they figured out the best way to paint on windows and make it, you know, come off later. And so they painted this beautiful mural at CNS Pizza. They've been a big supporter of our schools. And so they went down and they spent an entire day painting it, and it came out great. So we're looking to get to more area businesses and create work in their windows as well as a way to get our art out in the community. And then we wanted to just show you these really cool banners that we've created. Mr. Worth and I designed these banners over the summer as a way to just show NM pride as you drive into Nissat Tisset. If you have, you've probably seen them. And our custodians were able to hang them up, and we think that they look really great. We did share them with the other schools, and I know Varnum Brook. Theirs just came in about a week ago, so theirs will be hung shortly, and just a great way to show NM pride around our campus.
We've recently had a major upgrade for our school security cameras. That was spearheaded by Jeremy Hammond, so thank you for all, for all his work with that. And, and they're fantastic cameras. They kind of help us get a better view of all the entry points in the school, something that was desperately needed, and it's just, it's a great way of kind of bring, modernizing our school and kind of giving us more tools for security in school.
And that's all we have for you tonight. We just wanted to give you a snapshot of some things that are going on in our school. Does anybody have any questions or?
Well, thank you both. That was fantastic. I don't know if the committee has any questions, but that was great.
All right, Dave?
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for all that you're doing. You know, I know my kids in particular really liked the, the STEM week. They came back bragging about it and telling me all the great stuff, and I even accidentally drove up the wrong road to Nissat Tisset this weekend and noticed the banners, and I was like, oh, this just looks great. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad they enjoyed it.
If no one else has a comment, I'll just say I, I went to the, the STEM week presentations, and I was just blown away, and the young gentleman who's actually in one of the photos was telling me about the, the wind-driven, I forgot what he called it, but the, the wind-driven turbine that he built, and, and he was so passionate about it, and it was more than just an assignment, and it was something that he could tell that he enjoyed it, and, and all the other kids, I mean, he just sticks out my mind, but I mean, all the other kids I spoke with, they, they loved the work they were doing, and it wasn't something a teacher made them do or something that they just went through the motions of. They were passionate. A girl told me about why she built a apartment complex on her lunar structure rather than multiple little habitats, and why that was more efficient and all the benefits that that brought, and it was, it was just, it was, it was emotional, and I, I loved it. So I really appreciate the invite to that. I appreciate you showcasing this. I wish we had more than two people on the call that could hear this, and we've had hundreds of people on previous meetings to complain about stuff. The community's got to hear about this. This, this is what it's all about. This is why I think all of you, all of your staff, this is what you guys look for. This is what I love to hear. So I can't say it enough. I appreciate it. I went to the Frozen Junior Show blown away. I think, Ms. Young, I told you, just the fact that the kids do all that stuff. I, it's amazing. I, I had construction paper and tape when I was in middle school, and these kids have, they don't know how well they've got it, and they certainly show it, and they put their 110% in every day. It's because of you, your staff, the teachers. So thank you all for bringing out the best in the kids.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? All right. So thank you again. I don't know, he is on. So Mr. Fisk, unless you have anything else, Superintendent Morgan, if we'll move on to. All right. So Mr. Fisk has a request for a basketball team out of state travel.
Yes, hello, everybody. Not too far away, so my friend at Messinic High School right up above West Towns in there and New Ipswich reached out to set up a scrimmage for our boys varsity basketball program. And it is scheduled for Wednesday this week, and obviously, even though it's only, you know, 10 minutes up the road, we just need to get the committee's approval to make that trek, and I welcome any questions. Pretty straightforward, you know, we'll be up there for a couple hours and we'll, we'll come back home. So for the boys' basketball to play in a preseason scrimmage with New, Messinic High School, which is in New Ipswich.
And this again, so the preseason, not something that was, was on your schedule, just something you guys were able to work out with?
Correct, yes. It came together pretty last minute. I would say, you know, last week or so, but I know that something where obviously it's, it's closer than a lot of the schools that we compete against during the regular season, which is odd, right? But Shepherd Hill is a good trek down to Dudley Charlton there. We, we got to go there this year as well, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve at the North Middlesex varsity boys.
Correct.
Basketball team to travel to New Ipswich, New Hampshire to scrimmage Messinic Regional High School on December 8, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. That's Susan and June. Any questions? Excellent question I have. Cam, it's just around like how, like how often these types of requests come through, and they seem just because we live on the border of a state that, that these have to come through the committees, or probably like to explore some mechanism where we don't have to do this for at least routine, close trips like this, but how, like how often do the sports teams encounter this type of thing in a year? Is it, is it a handful of times? Is it 20? Is it?
Definitely a handful. Obviously, there are some opportunities for some tournament-type events that we could look into. That's nothing that we are entertaining at this time, but you know, an example like in the fall, Tingsborough High School uses the golf course out of Nashua, right? So that's something that we can anticipate next year. It's really mostly preseason stuff, because obviously, for us to be able to play any out-of-state teams to count towards our like actual contest schedule, we'd have to get those sanctioned between both state associations. So it's mostly for informal contests, if you will.
Thank you. Susan?
And was I right, right, Cam? It's just the boys, just the varsity. I didn't want to limit you.
Correct, yes, boys varsity, yep.
Okay. And the robotics team usually knows their schedule. They usually travel out of state. I had a kid on the team once. So occasionally, there's an odd thing comes up at the last minute, an opportunity they didn't know, or maybe they earned the right to go to that opportunity for the performance, just to answer your other question, Craig.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, so this is to allow them to travel out of state. So Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
You know, yes, so that's unanimous, and enjoy the trip.
Right on. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess unless, Tom, you've got anything with negotiation and personnel, which I'm assuming now. For policy, we did have two policies that were out for first reading. I don't know if anybody from the policy subcommittee knows if there was any feedback on those before we discuss them.
No, they were posted, Craig, but I didn't have anybody contact me with, with any, you know, any comments.
All right. Then unless someone has any last minute feedback, we'll, I'll take a motion to approve policy IHBG-R homeschooling and policy AA school district legal status.
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments on the policies? All right, so this is to approve both. Dave?
Abstain.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous with one abstention. Any other business that anybody had that was unanticipated?
Um. This, we approve the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
That was before you joined, Susan.
Got it. Thank you.
If there's nothing else before we adjourn, just back to the chairperson's report. I've had a few conversations with folks who have sent some not-so-nice emails to committee recently. And just to update the committee, so in, in my conversations, obviously, folks' tone has changed drastically when you get them on the phone and talk to them. What I found is that there's a, not surprisingly, a huge misconception on where the mask policy came from. A lot of folks, not, not that I've spoken to a huge number of folks, I'd say less than 10, but the far majority of them felt or believed. or believed that we as a committee came up with this policy and implemented it kind of on our own, not understanding that it came down from the commissioner from DSE from the state. So that was that was kind of a revelation on for me, anyway, that that folks are coming at us with, again, nasty emails and comments without the facts, getting their information from usually social media. So working to correct that, again, encourage folks to have those in person conversations where you can. So curious to see what happens with any evolution come January, but I'm sure we'll we'll get more people to attend than just two when that topic comes back around. So I just want to mention that, just give an update. And then just hope everybody has a good holiday, good get some rests, decompress, take a breather. And we'll see you all back in in January. So now I'll take a motion to a journalist. Susan, you have something?
Yeah, I just for the January tenth agenda. I think we should put the snow day thing on there in anticipation that we won't see a decision by the commissioner by then that we'll have to make our own decision. Because we're going to have snow days, and if the commissioner is just providing guidance, to me, that means we can do what we want versus a mandate. And we can obviously revise what we decide if information does come down from the state.
That's so. Just to clarify, I I don't think when I say that the commissioner hasn't decided yet, if he comes back and says that we have to make up a minimum of five school of five snow days, that would not be guidance. That would be a mandate. And if we did not do that, we would not meet our time of learning, and we would not have enough days on the calendar in which to in which to count for the students. So I I think where we're good, where we may have some say, where we may have some local control is if we go beyond the five snow days, what that is going to look like in the district. If that makes sense. So again, I think based on what I'm hearing, I'm hearing no formal decision, but I'm hearing there's a lot of confidence that five are going to have to be made up, period, no matter what. After that, there may be some flexibility.
Right, because yeah. I don't want to make up the five. And that would be what?
Oh, I just want I want to be careful. We don't talk about something that's not on the agenda, so we can put that for discussion if if we need to. But I think the where we stand now seems pretty clear. And then
Mass regulations currently say that five days have to be built into the school calendar to be made up. So last year, the commissioner had that amended so that ended as June thirtieth. So currently, five days have to be made up according to the regulations.
Right.
Unless the commissioner got that amended, that is currently the regulation.
Okay. So I, yeah, I I we can add it if there's any news, but it sounds like if there's no change that we've got some clear direction, unless some misunderstanding up.
So the the question that we're looking for some guidance on if he's going to waive that five day thing that's in the law, Nancy?
I think that there's a couple of different pieces. And the first piece is that he'd have to to have no snow days made up, he'd have to change the regulations. Five days are currently in the regulation. So past five days, that's what the decision we're waiting on is I think that that's the most plausible change moving forward is that he says because there's only five that are required, that there's a possibility past the fifth, and that's why Superintendent Morgan was speaking about that, because that seems like the most plausible route. But amend the regulation at this time, I don't think that they've brought anything forward from the commissioner. So I don't think and superintendent, if there's anything I'm off on that.
Yeah, thanks for clearing up what we were looking for from the state. Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Dave, did you have your hand up? I thought it went up briefly. You're good. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn then.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
No, but yes. So we are adjourned. Again, happy holidays. Have a good new year.
See you.
Bye.